Welcome to the Wednesday, October 12th, 6:30 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. First agenda item is roll call. Aisling, will you call roll, please?
Ian Bartow?
Here. Nothing to disclose.
Crystal Chandler?
Here. I made a site visit and I have nothing else to disclose.
Benwick?
Here. And I did speak with one of the individuals that left a public comment in my official capacity at Idaho State University. Nothing else to disclose. It had noth-
Who was presenting the facts?
Kathy Olson. It was strictly about facts of this.
Roger Fray?
Fray.
Here, and I made a site visit again to item number two. Nothing else to disclose.
Hrada Hewitt?
I'm here and I have nothing to disclose.
Rich Phillips?
Present with nothing to disclose.
With you, Rue.
Here, and I have nothing to disclose.
There was a revision made to the agenda this afternoon and it was reposted. It simply took out the approval of the minutes, but we do need a motion to follow this amended agenda.
I move to amend the agenda as posted October 12th at noon.
Second.
We have a motion by Hewitt and a second by Phillips. Aisling, will you call vote?
I'm sorry, who motioned? Sorry.
Hewitt, motioned. Phillips, second.
And who?
Phillips.
All right, so we have Hewitt.
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Bartow?
You?
You, do you approve-
Here.
No, yes.
Do you approve them?
I didn't hear that.
Canda?
Yes.
Benwick?
Yes.
Fray?
Yes.
Phillips? Oops, sorry. Rue?
Yes.
Phillips, should I get you?
He was the second.
We have to apologize. We haven't had agenda items for a couple of months, so we're filling a little green tonight. Bear with us. So, agenda item number two is a public hearing contract rezone. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding requests by John Burtonshaw of JG Ventures LLC, represented by Mike Jaglowski of Kenport Engineering LLC, for the contract zone map amendment of 8.75 acres, more or less, of land west of residential low-density RS to residential commercial professional RCP. The site is located adjacent to the Hospital Way, east of Portnife Medical Center, and west of the Sage Wood Hills subdivision. I would like to remind that the applicant has 10 minutes, and the clock is right there if you need to look at it. And at this time, I would invite the applicant to come forward. Wait, I'm skipping items. Okay, I kept to declare the public hearing open first.
Thank you.
Can I just take a couple of minutes to get this set up? And then... For heaven's sakes. Okay.
Go.
Go.
I didn't know if it was a race. Mike Jaglowski, I'm with Kenport Engineering. We're here to discuss the contract rezone or zone agreement for the Hospital Way development. Just real quickly, some introductions. JG Ventures, they're a firm here in Idaho Falls and in Pocatello, representing, they represent both areas and other areas throughout Idaho. I am Kenport Engineering. Mike Jaglowski, I started this about a year ago. And I would have to say probably about a year, maybe 13 months ago, Hospital Way became an opportunity, right? And JG Ventures spent a lot of effort doing the due diligence. They searched the documents within, that could be found within public record. They searched documents within the city of Pocatello. They looked at the comprehensive plan. The city ordinance interviewed staff and determined that this opportunity made sense. From that standpoint, I entered the picture and I did the same thing. I looked at the ordinance. I looked at the city comprehensive plan. I talked to staff. I talked to anybody that I could about this site so we can kind of get a feel of how to develop it. And really, at the end, what we found that this made sense. This follows what's recommended in the comprehensive plan, and it follows what's directed in the city code of going from a mixed-use, future-use, land-use map to zoning designation to an RCP zone within the city of Pocatello on that. From that, we looked at several different objectives, but really, what we came down to is that we looked at this site as a multi-use residential, commercial, professional offices, medical office type of complex, something where people are able to live, a place where people are able to do business, a place where businesses want to be, and really try to make this a transitional area between the commercial that is on the west side of the property and the residential that's on the east side of the property. As mentioned, the guiding documents that's here, that we had an opportunity to really dive into, was the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is something that developers and planners and engineers look at to try to have an idea of how a chunk of land or parcel of land can be developed. In that comprehensive plan, we have a future land use map, and that land use map provides a designation of what the land use could be on that. That land use for this particular property is mixed-use. Mixed-use in the city ordinance aligns directly with RCP, which is a zone that we ask for this parcel to be rezoned to. I got to lube up the lips a little bit. I'm getting a little sticky. Okay, this is really from the April 13th, 2022. Why isn't this going? This is interesting. Okay. My apologies. This is from the April 13th, 2022. These are the goals that we came up with. These are the goals that we presented at this meeting in April 13th, and these are the things that we look at. And this aligns with everything that we find in the comprehensive plan at that time and also now, and it also aligns with what's shown in the city ordinance on that. Some of the things that are notable is the residential, commercial, professional components, the vertical, and the vertical alignment, the topography, the interest, and the different points that are through there. Through this, boy, this is interesting. Through this meeting, we were effectively asked to stop, slow down, and visit with the adjacent residents, adjacent landowners, really, is what it comes down to. I had an opportunity to meet three adjacent landowners. We met three different times in a residence home that is just adjacent to this property, and we discussed. We had opportunities to understand what the different... I'm just going to close this. These are different, so I apologize. We had an opportunity to discuss the differences in the opportunities that we can to have something a lot more, or have an opportunity of being harmonious between this site and the existing residential, and also the existing commercial to the side. What we learned from these conversations is four unique, not unique, but four principles. Number one is that we ought to take the residential component of RCP and place it adjacent to the eastern boundary. Number two, we should take the residential density, and we ought to work to reduce that. Number three, we ought to double the buffer area from 10 feet to 20 feet. And number four, we ought to take a look at the building height for the new structures within that residential area. Okay, from that, we had a chance, we as the development group had a chance to look through this and to work through the different items, come up with different plans and opportunities. And what we found, we're out of those four principles, and this is in your packet as well, is that we dedicate 3.8 acres of RCP land just for residential use. And that residential use would be adjacent to the east boundary or to the existing houses. The second thing is that we concede to reduce the density by 20%, reducing the density from 30 units per acre to 24 units per acre. We're doubling, offering to double the buffer zone, and then decreasing the building height by 10% from going from 45 feet down to 40 feet. And hopefully, this will, this will work, but I need to get to... It works here, guys. I'm sorry. It's in your packet. It is the picture that has the residential use that's in purple. Yep, that one right there. What you see there is the 3.8 acres. You see that it's adjacent to the residential component or the existing residential houses. Again, we're reducing the density of that by 20%. We're decreasing the building height by...
Get out of presentation mode, I think I'll work.
Shin, will you pause the talk, please?
Go to...
Yeah, so I'm in...
Click here on the PowerPoint. And, yeah.
So go out of presentation?
Press Escape.
So it escapes here, but it's not...
Click there. To PowerPoint. Click out of that. I don't know what's going on. There we go. Okay, now go to your PDF.
There it is. Okay. Okay, thank you. Pardon me. So, as you can see here, the residential use that we are strictly conceding to, we're reducing density. We're aligning that residential use to maximize the different type of transition that can happen from the residential over to the commercial. We are increasing the buffer, and we're reducing, offering to reduce the building height on that. This lower zone down here, the green, is just exactly as what the RCP designation allows within the city code on that. And, let's see, guys, I'm hoping, this gives another depiction. I think that this is in your packet as well. This gives you an idea of what the residential, the residential component versus the commercial component in scale, whoops, in scale with respect to a house that is just outside, I mean, yeah, just to the east of their property line. This is kind of what it would look like. I heard a question that was earlier that said, hey, what's the size of this building? And this building is depicted from the inside, you know, from the uphill side, it's depicted as 45 feet. It's depicted as if it was an RCP zone. These buildings over here are depicted at 40 feet, and this is about what the terracing would look like. Okay, so in summary, I know I have 41 seconds now. In summary, I think that this application is about using the guiding documents and trying to understand what can work on this site. The guiding documents, the city comprehensive plan says mixed-use. And the city ordinance, it says that the comprehensive plan, when it says mixed-use, it aligns directly with RCP, and that is our goal. This commission asked for us to talk to the residents, talk to the other property owners. We did such, and I can tell you, those conversations weren't drinking soda pop and laughing. We were arm wrestling. We were trying to figure out exactly how things could work. And time is up.
Thank you. Commission, any questions for the applicants representative? You guys have done a topographic survey of the area?
We have.
So I assume that's what your profile is based on, then?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
We've, and it's in our application. We have a topographic survey in there. We have availability to our geotechnical report. Thank you.
Any other questions from commission?
I have a question. So, I don't know if it's the appropriate time to ask this, but in your discussion with the community, I guess the question is, it seems like you addressed a lot of these, I guess in terms of the community. Like you adopted some of their concerns in terms of your plans, right? So...
We feel like we have.
Okay.
We feel like we've addressed their concerns. They might have a different idea. Like I said, we weren't drinking soda pop and smiling. We were arm wrestling. We were trying to work through issues, you know, all in the gain of trying to make something, trying to help something be harmonious. And in the packet, there are those four fundamental areas that we kept coming back to, which is where is the residence going to be, what size, how does that fit in that area, what is the density on that, what is the building height, and, you know, maybe we should have more setback. And that's really what we conceded to, is looking at those things.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commission? Okay, thank you, Mike. At this time, I would like to invite staff to come forward.
Brought my jug of water with me, just in case. Good evening, ma'am chair, commission members, Matthew Lewis, senior planner with the city. As noted in the agenda item, an application has been submitted by John Burtonshaw of JG Ventures LLC, and represented by Michael Jaglowski, requesting to rezone 8.75 acres of a 13.13 acre parcel from residential low-density RL to residential commercial professional RCP. The remaining 4.38 acres is already zoned RCP, as the northern portion. The site is located adjacent to Hospital Way, east of the Portnife Medical Center, and west of Sage Wood Hills neighborhood. The comprehensive plan designation for the parcel is mixed-use. The parcel is vacant, consisting of mostly crested wheatgrass. The subject property can be adequately served by public facilities and services. All city utilities are adjacent to or able to be extended when development occurs. See if I can sure to get my, I might be out of whack. So, I was flipping through my... Oh, any future development will have primary, sorry, I got out, my stuff got out of whack. Furniture development will have primary access from Hospital Way with no traffic impact occurring to Sage Wood Hills neighborhood to the east. Notice was published in the Idaho State Journal, and three signs were posted on the subject property September 27th, 2022. It should be noted that the southernmost sign was inadvertently placed on the 5.03 acre parcel in an effort to give as much notice and visibility for the public regarding the subject public hearing. The sign was subsequently removed, but there's two signs that remained. All property owners within 300-foot radius of the external boundaries of the land being considered have been provided notice of the public hearing in order that they may provide comment on the proposed contract zone map amendment. Written comment was received by Cliff Olson prior to completion of the staff report, and such was provided in the commission's packet. Additional written comment was received by Kathy Olson, Cynthia Ma, Joy Kennedy, Wallace Kennedy, Kristy Lynn Dower, Stephen Balkin, Bush, Gary Payne, Abraham Copeland, Joanne Atkinson, Lauren Stewart, Candy Brown, and Cliff Olson on October 11th, 2022. All were forwarded to the commission at 8:44 this morning. Written comments received today have been provided to the commission as well. The applicant is requesting to rezone by contracted parcel to RCP designation, which, if approved, will allow land uses as permitted under the designation. Under Code Section 1703.300, the RCP zoning district is intended to accommodate a mix of residential, professional office, and neighborhood commercial uses, including business, professional services, convenience, retail, personal services, and restaurants in close proximity to residential areas and major transportation facilities. Residential uses are permitted consistent with the density and requirements of the RH zoning district. Developments in the RCP zoning district may be used to serve as a buffer between residential uses and commercial or industrial uses. Zoning map amendment review criteria is outlined under Municipal Code Section 1702.170E. E1, how the requested zoning at the location in question would be in the community's best interest. The applicant's proposal to amend the zone map from RL to RCP is consistent with the mixed-use designation of the comprehensive plan's future land use map. Amendment of the zoning via contract amendment is also compliant with Municipal Code Section 1701.130, consistency with the comprehensive plan. Zoning districts shall be guided by uses, use designations outlined in Pocatello Comprehensive Plan. The following chart shall be used to guide the consistency. The subject parcel meets both the purpose and antenna of the RCP zoning district as provided under Code Section 1703.200 and 17.03300F. The property is located, again, directly east of Portnife Medical Campus with access from Hospital Way. Proximity to the hospital allows convenience for doctors, patients, employees, and the general public. The area may also provide various services to neighborhood, such as medical offices, eating and drinking establishments with restrictions, and consumer services. E2, how the list of uses permitted by the zoning ordinance would blend with surrounding land uses. The commission may recall holding a public hearing on April 13th, 2022, in consideration of an application submitted by JG Ventures requesting to amend the zoning map designation of 8.75 acres plus or minus of land from RL to RCP. Following a great deal of discussion, the commission recommended denial of the zone map amendment, finding the application did not meet the standards for approval under Chapter 1702.17 of Pocatello City Code. The commission further recommended that, as an alternative to denying the requested rezoning, the city council may wish to consider entering into a contract zoning agreement as provided under Code Section 1702.170J, rather than rezoning the parcel to straight-out RCP. And just as a clarification, if the council so does enter into, and they feel like that's where they would like to go, that contract zoning agreement is specifically between the property owner and the city. City staff, city planning staff received a letter from JG Ventures withdrawing the application on April 28th, 2022, to pursue the contract zoning option at a later date. Therefore, the previous application was never considered by the city council. According to the written analysis provided by the current application, the applicant's representative, Michael Jaglowski, has reached out to Sage Wood Hills subdivision. The applicant's land use concessions can be found in the written analysis provided in Attachment A. E3, if the subject site is physically suitable for the type and intensity of land uses permitted under the proposed zoning district. Research shows that the parcel in question had a comprehensive plan designation of industrial office park, or I/OP, from 2003 to 2014. The comprehensive plan map was amended to the current mixed-use designation in 2015. The industrial and office park designations typically allow for more intense land uses compared to those permitted or conditionally permitted in MU designation. It should be noted that if rezoned, Municipal Code Section 1705.270, transitional landscape buffers would require a minimum 10-foot-wide landscape buffer with a sight-obscuring fence or solid wall at least six feet in height along the common boundary line abutting the residential district to the east. As part of a successful contract zoning agreement, the applicant proposes to provide a minimum 20-foot buffer. Staff is recommending an additional condition in reference to the landscape buffer, which is condition number two in the staff report. Staff finds that the increased landscape buffer in combination with the topography, which generally slopes east to west, will allow for less visual impact to the neighborhood. All traffic to any development on the subject parcel will occur from Hospital Way, which is designated minor material. Due to the fact that a single-family residence may be constructed to a maximum height of 35 feet, staff is recommending that the maximum height of any multifamily apartment structure shall not exceed 38.5 feet. This is contrary to the applicant's proposed 40-feet maximum height, and administrative adjustment may be available for construction of a home allowing for maximum height of 38.5 feet. See condition number three of the staff report. Staff is recommending that earth-toned colors and non-reflective materials be used with any future development. This was also a requirement of the Portnife Medical Center development. In addition, staff recommends that the developer use exterior treatments to break up the facade, such as, but not limited to, awnings, variation of materials, and color schemes, and this is noted in condition number four of the staff report. E4, criteria, if the use is permitted in the proposed zoning district would be adequately served by public facilities and services, such as thoroughfares, police and fire protection, drainage, refuge disposal, water, sewer, and schools to ensure the public health, safety, and general welfare. Utilities were notified via email on the pending application on September 14th, 2022. No comments have been received as of 5:00 PM this evening. All city utilities... All city utilities are either adjacent to or can be extended to the subject property. Any future development will have primary access from Hospital Way with no traffic impact occurring to Sagewood Hills subdivision to the east. E5, criteria, if the uses permitted in the zoning district would be compatible in terms of their scale, mass, coverage, density, and intensity with adjacent land uses. Any professional or commercial development will have limited impact on the Sagewood neighborhood due in part that the development will be closer to Hospital Way and height limited at 45 feet. As just mentioned, staff has also recommended a condition that will reduce visual impacts to the area and general public. E6, criteria, whether the proposed zoning designation is consistent with the comprehensive plan land use map designation. The comprehensive plan land use map designation for the subject property, again, is mixed-use. The requested zoning map amendment is consistent with the current designation and would not require a change to the comprehensive plan map with the proposed change from residential low-density to RCP. Also see Table 1701.130 under the staff report. In consideration of the application, staff concludes that the proposed contract zoning map amendment is compliant with Pocatello City Code Section 1702.170. Should the commission recommend approval of the subject application, staff recommends that eight conditions be attached as underlined in the staff report. And the ones that I really stressed in this presentation were 2 through 4, which deal basically with the transitional buffer, the height of the multifamily apartments, and the use of earth-toned materials and non-reflective materials. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Commission, any questions for staff?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. First of all, you mentioned that the contract that would be established would be between the property owner and the city, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yes.
Does it remain with the property if the property owner is sold, if the property is sold to a new property owner? Does the, do the, does the contract rezoned go with the property?
So, it does, and I'm just going to read this.
Okay.
So, this is under Contract Zoning Agreements 1702.170, which is title text of map amendments, which that falls under Number Five of J5 of Form and Content of Agreement. In the event a contract zoning agreement is deemed appropriate by the city council, the developer or owner shall execute an agreement with the city that shall be reviewed and approved for form by the city attorney prior to final council action. The agreement shall contain the provisions set out below, and once executed by the developer/owner shall be presented to the council for its approval. Minimum provision shall include: A) Identification of uses to be allowed under the agreement; B) Identification of development standards that shall be required under the agreement; C) Plan implementation of improvements and plan construction/completion schedule; D) Required surety for the project completion if abandoned or otherwise uncompleted; E) A provision that the owner/developer acknowledges and agrees that failure to comply with the terms of the agreement shall result in a rezoning of the real property to the zoning district existing immediately prior to the execution of the agreement; F) A provision specifying that the agreement and all conditions, terms, duties, and obligations included in said agreement shall be an encumbrance on the real property and shall run with the land; G) Any other matter required by the city council.
Okay, thank you. I have another two questions. What other, what, first of all, what is the purpose of the mixed-use designation on the comprehensive plan map? What is the, the planning and zoning, why do we have mixed-use designation there? What's the thinking behind that?
Well, your mixed-use is your typical, is kind of your transition zone. So, to give you an example, Center and Clark, for instance, you have residential, you have mixed in with office, limited commercial, so forth. There's numerous areas in this town that have that area. So, it's, it's a step not as far as going to Commercial General. So, you're going, kind of having that transition, that buffering.
Okay, okay. And what is the zoning for the hospital?
Hospital is RCP. It was approved through a planning and development.
Okay. My next question is, what are other mixed-use designations that might be possible besides RCP?
That's the only mixed-use we have.
RCP is?
Yes.
Okay. My next question is, the plan that we've seen here, okay, that has the residential use up there and the commercial down low, I get the conditions and all of those things. Is the developer tied to this, that the residential has to go back there and the commercial goes up front?
That's what they're proposing.
That's what they're proposing. Is that part of the contract rezon?
Yes, if you go, if you go and you look at, again, they're concessions.
Right.
Their concessions are, they won't, they would like to have the multifamily as you see it there. Now, the commission can make a recommendation if you do, otherwise, but their concession is, they would like to have the multifamily there with the limited 40 feet. And staff is, is, you can see, with the condition.
I got, I got the transitional zone part and the limit of the height part of it. I just wanted to make sure that the, the contract rezon we have does call out that that back part will be residential and we won't end up with.
It'll still, it'll still be, it'll be zoned RCP, but it'll be limited, the use will be limited to the.
Apartments.
To the apartments.
Okay.
With the condition.
That's, that's what I was trying to get at. Okay. And that would go, well, you've already answered that it would go forward with the property. So, okay, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you.
Have a question?
Yes.
So, I guess, thank you, Matt. So, I guess the question I have is that the applicant mentioned that one of the, you know, kind of compromises that he's done, willing to do with regards to speaking with the community was that he would abide to kind of lowering the density to 24 dwelling units per acre. And I know that if we change from residential low-density to RCP, you can possibly create up to 30 units per acre.
Yes.
So, I guess the question is that can we add that condition or was that condition?
That's one of their concessions.
Okay.
Their concession is, they are willing to go from the 30 units per acre, if it's rezoned.
Can we?
Per, per the RCP, into the 24 units.
Can we make that explicit as a condition?
Sure.
Okay.
Any other questions from commission?
I've got a question for the developer. Is it time for that?
Yeah, right now, no.
Do we, do we need to make all four of those concessions?
So, if, if we recommend to, recommend that the city council approve this, the concessions become conditions as well?
They become binding.
They would become binding, and it'd be part of, maybe part of the contract that would be between the council and the developer/owner that is drafted with, by the legal department.
Okay, so we don't have to add them in as additional conditions on our motion?
No, you don't have to go like, you know, have a list of everything. Because they're already in their application saying.
They're in the application, so they're bound to that.
So, these conditions, sorry, these conditions trump their concessions.
Those are additional, yes. Like I said on, they're wanting, in their recommendations. They're not, they're recommended conditions. That, again, the applicant is willing to say, go from the 45 under RCP to the 40.
Right.
Staff's logic is to even further that because you could build a single-family home there at 35 feet, and you could get an admin adjustment up to 38.5. And that's what I'm recommending, or staff's recommending.
So, I guess, just for clarification, so I guess, given that the concessions, there are four concessions that they made, and, and so, number two, you kind of explicitly said that, oh, you know, number three will kind of override their number two concession. So, but we can also, I guess, in this particular kind of set of conditions, is there, there's no specific wording that the four concessions would also be followed or legally binding?
I don't think we have to because it's a contract rezon.
Yeah. You can, you can ask for clarification, we do have our legal representative here, but I believe that because it's in their application, it's going to be made part of any agreement with, with the council. These are additional recommendations.
Okay, so, so we don't have to add that condition of the lower dwelling?
I don't believe so.
Because that's already included in the.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I would like to ask legal to come up and speak to that also, please, just for the public record.
Matt Kerbs, legal counsel. I assume you want me to clarify.
Yes, do we need to add those four things to the conditions that we vote on?
Ultimately, if you do recommend to council that they accept the contract rezon, you can do it as per the application, as per with the staff's recommendations, or anywhere in between that and a denial, you could, you could add your own conditions as part of that recommendation. Ultimately, the council will receive your recommendation and, again, could go anywhere from the applicant's information that they provided with the concessions, to staff's recommendations, to anywhere in between that and a denial as well with those conditions as they see fit.
Okay.
That answer the question?
Yes, thank you. We appreciate you, oh, we need to be louder, guys. We appreciate you being here.
We do.
Are we, we have any questions for staff? We got them all answered?
Hmm.
Okay. So, this time we are going to open it up to the public. I would just like to remind everybody that you are limited to three minutes. We will stop you at three minutes. You need to state your name and write it on the piece of paper that it's up there. If you want to write your name first, we'll start the clock after it's wrote. Questions and comments should be pertinent to the application and addressed only to the commission. As this is a public hearing, there should be no questions, comments, or applause from the audience. And if the meeting does go later than 8 o'clock, we will take a scheduled 10-minute break. At this time, I would like to invite anybody up providing testimony supporting the application.
I'm supporting.
This thing.
You can put it on the cheerlead here.
Thank you.
All right. My name is Ryan Bowen, counsel. Thank you for volunteering your time this evening. It's much appreciated. A little bit about me, my background includes healthcare administration, property management, and land-servicing. I'm in favor of JG Ventures' propositions. Allow me to kind of share three benefits that can be immediately identified with the proposed development. First, the sidewalks on the east side of Hospital Way would be fully established and connected, leading to Portnife Regional Transit, PRT bus stop, which is located just north of the zone. This particular PRT bus stop is the nearest to the hospital, Portnife Medical Center, PMC. For several years, the sidewalk has posed several dangers to its commuters as the sidewalk is segmented, beginning and ending at the discussed zone. Two, the development is in the healthcare mecca of Pocatello. The availability of future medical office space that affords proximity to the hospital would attract healthcare providers from the greater southeast Idaho area to possibly relocate and expand their clinical office spaces. PMC is a regional hospital, offering a wide array of medical services. The community's best interest is at heart because healthcare services can be achieved within a tighter radius of the new development. From Center Street to Terry Street, Hospital Way extends to just under a mile. I like to call it the medical mile. It includes services of over two dozen healthcare providers serving the Pocatello community. Their essential services are greatly appreciated, and what better way for the city of Pocatello to pay it forward than by mitigating a land development hurdle? And lastly, third, from a land-servicing perspective, it does not make sense to me that the street name Hospital Way be designated within a residential area. From Chapter Four of the city's comprehensive plan, Economic Development, Objective 3.2, which states, "Allow for and encourage development of a variety of retail and service businesses that are pleasant places for people to shop, work, shop, walk, and congregate," specifically aligns JG Ventures' development goals with the city of Pocatello. As a medical mile has been and continues to be economically developed, it only reinforces the fact that 8.75-acre parcel be rezoned to RCP. That's, that's it.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite anybody else up supporting the application. Anybody uncommitted to the application?
Can I speak as the developer?
In the rebuttal? Well, you could speak.
Make a public comment, but that would be.
Yeah, you can make a public comment, yeah.
Yeah. So, John Burtonshaw with JG Ventures, there's a general frustration. Well, on April 13, a gentleman stood up for some storage units off McKinley, and this Hispanic gentleman said, you know, there's a frustration that, you know, down here in McKinley, no one listens to me, and I don't want storage units, but if it was up on Satterfield, you know, you guys would listen. And shortly thereafter, you know, they approved the storage units. There was an irony that 20 minutes later, we get up there, we do our presentation, we had already talked to planning and zoning, we talked to, we knew this was the comprehensive of the plan of the city, we knew there's a transitional zone, everyone was excited for us to do this, so we bought the property and we go forth. And then, it seemed a few individuals, there's 10 houses roughly along that property line, they come forward and they're opposed to it. Mind you, we're not level with them, we're 10, 15 feet below them. And the plan became, yeah, we want RCP from the city to, well, let's do a contract rezon because of these, you know, few individuals. So, there's a, there's a general frustration that this has come through, right? The planning of the city cannot be one of not in my backyard. I completely get why, why they might want to oppose it and they might want to have this discussion, but this is a transitional zone, it's in the city's comprehensive plan, it's been there for pushing seven or eight years now. It could have been argued years ago, and, and now when a developer comes in and wants to do it, now all of a sudden there's the pushback. That's an extreme frustration from a developer because we never really know what we're going to get. And so, we have, we've talked to them, and we're conceding. We're going from 40, 45 feet to 40. We're going, even though, I think his name's Matthew, suggested 38.5, I'm asking for 40. So, 45, 45 feet to 40. We've gone from a 10-foot buffer zone, we doubled it to 20 for the residents. We've gone from 30 units per acre to 24 units per acre. Everything that they've asked for, we, we have conceded. We've tried to be a good neighbor. But there is a point where it's like, you know, what else do you want other than not doing anything? And so, I would just ask that you keep in mind that we have put our best foot forward. And so I would just ask that you keep in mind that we have put our best foot forward. All the things that they've asked for, we have conceded on, not just by a little bit, but by a lot. And if we want future development in Pocatello, we have to stick with what the comprehensive plan states and the seed ordinance is. We can't keep causing confusion amongst developers because we don't know what we're going to get, and we're expending.
Time.
Tens of thousands of dollars to make this happen.
Thank you. Anybody else uncommitted to the application? At this time, I would like anybody providing testimony opposed to the application to come forward. Make sure you sign your name, please. No, you're good.
No, it's Richard, it's Richard. He's just signing, so if you could sign that.
That paper's to your right. Is it over there? Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you guys know your order and the next person can come up and sign it, please save us some time. There you go.
We would be happy to.
Thank you.
Well, members of the council, nice to be here with you this evening. I'm Richard Stallings. I live at seven-ten Bitterroot, which is in the impacted area, and I have some grave concerns about the impact on property values. As you're well aware, your decisions can be very positive or very detrimental to the overall worth of the properties in the impacted area. I think there's been some good faith negotiations that have taken place. I think that both sides have given some, but I think we could still go a little bit further. I appreciate what you're doing because you're in that situation where no one really appreciates the efforts you put into it because no one's always happy, and those that are happy don't usually give you the praise you get, while those that are opposed let you know very loud and clear why they're opposed. And so I know that you've got some difficult decisions ahead of you, but I hope that you'll think very clearly and carefully about what you're, what we're about. Because we've invested a lot of money in that neighborhood. We think it's a beautiful place. We like it as it is. And if there are some ungodly developments that will damage it, that hurts us all. When we lived in Madison County, we had a guy that was opposed to all zoning until Alfred came in and bought some land and did a pig rendering farm next to his property. You can guess that his attitude towards zoning changed very dramatically. Not what he wanted. I know there's going to be some development there. I don't think any of us want to stop that. I think there's going to be some, things happen that will be in the best interest of the community, but I just plead with you to give a great deal of consideration so that the neighbors are not unduly damaged by this venture. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live up on Bitterroot Drive with my family. As Mr. Stallings just indicated, this has been an issue that we've struggled with. For the committee's consideration and understanding, there is no agreement between residents and JG Ventures, unfortunately, and that's why we're here. I would also agree with Mr. Stallings that we all understand that there is going to be some form of development in the area. One of the big issues here, though, is that there are several different zoning codes in between the RL and the RCP, which certainly seem that they would be available for consideration. Those would be RMS, RMM, and RH. Each of those have, of course, as you all know, different requirements. RMM allows for twelve dwelling units per acre. RH allows for thirty. Of course, JG Ventures is looking at the thirty dwelling unit side of that. The residents during our negotiations have offered, we feel in good faith, to double or even triple the existing RL restrictions to eight and then again to twelve. Now we're here potentially with a twenty-four proposal, which is still, frankly, vastly more than the residents would like to see in the area. We don't consider this to be a reasonable proposal, and as part of that, we don't believe that this is in the community's best interest. We don't believe that it's a reasonable transition between zones. And what would, well, with JG Ventures' proposal of two-point-six residents per dwelling unit, this amounts to approximately three-hundred-and-fifty-nine new people lined up essentially on the back step of Bitterroot Drive. It's a significant increase from what we have now. What would seem to make some logical sense is some sort of a medium density along the Bitterroot Drive and professional buildings down lower, even potentially high-density units down closer to the hospital. This idea of being a good steward from JG Ventures, which was represented during our April meeting, is borderline comical. I've never been approached by Mr. Jaglowski or JG Ventures with any sort of proposal. My understanding is none of us have outside of the three people, excuse me, dealing with this, which is frustrating on our end, to say the least. Thank you.
My name's Brady Moon, and I live at seven-six-three Bitterroot Drive. I'd like to address the term being used as mixed use, which has been referenced throughout JG Ventures' application and also in the city plan. According to Table in Section seventeen dot oh-one dot one-three-zero of the City Code, mixed use permits RCP zoning. Mixed use does not equal RCP zone. It allows up to RCP. The table also goes on and uses the term guide when discussing the city plan. It also should be noted that the land in question could meet the city's recommendation of mixed use with a variety of zoning combinations. In fact, if you kept the eastern portion of the land as RL or even medium density and changed the west side to RCP, you could fulfill the vision or the city's plan for the mixed use. And either of those options provide a better blending of residential to commercial, which is the intent of the term mixed use found in the city plan. Jumping three residential codes from RL to RCP is not reasonable, nor does it blend with the existing quiet, low-density neighborhoods that we have today. Although the current supplemental by JG Ventures may comply with most of the city's plan, and I use the word most because it does not blend and it is not reasonable, it is paramount for the Planning and Zoning Board to understand and recognize that the suggestions made during the contract negotiations that we had by the residents of Sagewood Hills would accomplish that plan. So in fact, what we presented would accomplish the plan in a better way because it's using existing city code, which is existing law, or city code that matches up closely to it with the medium density. And this way, it would blend the RCP to our residential neighborhood in a much better way. So we believe that the solution is simple, and by definition, it should be, it is a fifty-fifty compromise, and it fulfills the city's plan. We keep RL or medium density to the east and then change the west to RCP. Now, please note that the RCP exclusions for the land to the west, which were agreed upon during the contract negotiations, they were not submitted in this application. Also, we had discussed a zone or a height of thirty-two, which was presented to us, and we found that reasonable. But we believe that leaving the RCP exclusions out of this application, the twenty-four units above our current zone, and the redaction of the agreed-upon height limit would, should be grounds for dismissal of this application of the contract rezone. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Vivian Goodner, and I live at eight-six-five Bitterroot Drive. I'm addressing criteria number two. Describe how the list of uses permitted by the zoning ordinance would blend with the surrounding uses. While the RCP commercial uses on the four-point-nine-five acres along the Hospital Way may blend with the nearby commercial uses, the residents of Sagewood Hills emphatically do not agree that the proposed three-point-eight acres of multifamily blends in any way with the Sagewood Hills community. The proposed density of twenty-four units per acre is six times the density of the adjoining community and wholly incompatible with the adjoining single-family residential. The graphic shared with Sagewood Hills showed six eighteen-unit buildings or one-hundred-and-eight units adjoining twelve units of single-family homes. How does virtually ten times the number of units blend with surrounding uses? It obviously does not. The application proposes a forty-foot height limit, which will loom fifteen feet above the tallest of the existing homes. How does that blend with surrounding uses? The applicant makes a big deal of a twenty percent density reduction, but it's very unlikely any density higher than twenty-four units per acre could be achieved without structured parking, i.e., parking garage of some kind, which is not economically feasible. Assuming a reasonable auto ratio of one-point-five vehicles per apartment unit, one-hundred-and-eight apartment units equals one-hundred-and-sixty-two vehicles utilizing the apartment parking lots. In one graphic, the apartment lots are shown between the apartment buildings and directly adjoining the backyards of the Bitterroot Drive's single-family homes. Does one-hundred-and-sixty-two cars coming and going adjoining the backyards of the single-family units blend with surrounding uses? Obviously not. Apartment parking lots must be lighted at night. Do lighted parking lots twenty feet from the backyards of these homes blend with the surrounding uses? Clearly not. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Balkenbush, and I live at seven-nineteen Bitterroot. And I wanted to talk about item three in the application, the physically suitability of the site for the intensity of land uses permitted under the proposed zoning district. Without the slope analysis required by City Code Section seventeen-point-zero-five-point-one-three-zero, it is impossible to know how much of the site exceeds fifteen percent. But first impression is that a substantial portion of the site does exceed this fifteen percent, which is actually only one foot per six-point-six-six feet horizontally. City Code Section seventeen-point-zero-five-point-one-four-zero-A-point-one states that, quote, "Areas disturbed by grading, example, cut and fill, shall be kept to a minimum," end quote. City Code Section seventeen-point-zero-five-point-one-four-zero-A-point-two states that, quote, "Development shall be concentrated on slopes less than fifteen percent on the site, with slopes of greater than fifteen percent remaining undisturbed to the extent possible," end quote. Looking at the site subject to this rezoning, it is obvious that the site cannot be developed at the intensity proposed without wholesale grading and cut and fill of a substantial portion of the entire site. Based on the site conditions and the zoning ordinance requirements which discourage development on steep slopes, the subject site is not physically suitable for the type and intensity of land uses permitted under the proposed zoning district. More importantly, Table seventeen-point-zero-five-point-one-four limits density and disturbance on slopes from fifteen percent to twenty-four-point-nine percent to fifty percent of the allowable density and maximum site disturbance to fifty percent. In my opinion, there's a reason that this site has not been developed because it would require substantial earthwork to do so. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Candy Brown, live at eight-ninety-five Bitterroot, and I'd like to address the condition that says, "Describe if the proposed zoning district would be compatible in terms of their scale, mass, coverage, density, and intensity with the adjacent land uses." The, contrary to what the developer stated, most of the land behind the residence is elevated above our backyard. So adding an additional forty feet that the developer is asking for above our backyards is very ominous and is not what the comprehensive plan states as, that the developer should not sacrifice livability of the nearest neighborhood. And indeed, this does sacrifice the livability of all of our homes along Bitterroot Drive. When we built those homes, the restriction was twenty-five feet. So the forty feet is actually fifteen feet above all of those homes. There are no vacant lots that anyone will be building new construction at thirty-five feet. So the height is incompatible and is not agreeable to the residents of the Sagewood Hills area. And I'd also like to point out that twenty-four units per acre at eight acres is two-hundred-and-seventy-two, with one-point-five cars average per unit. That is around five-hundred extra cars that will be having to enter and exit off of Hospital Way, which the traffic study said will not affect this minor artery, which since the study was put together, it has become a major artery. And if any of you want to question that, visit the intersection at Hospital Way and Center Street, East Center Street. And this is where the problem will be. And I ask that the commission consider the adage that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And all of us know the problems that have occurred when traffic has not been considered and entering and exiting off of blind curves both directions have not been actually addressed. So we thank you for your time and ask you to consider the livability of our neighborhood and respect the homeowners. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Rick Nordsteth. I live at eight-seventy-two Bitterroot. I've lived there for thirty years. I'm speaking with regards, I was on the committee that, working on the contract negotiate, contract rezoning. With regards to that meeting, the meetings did take place, but an agreement wasn't ever reached. In fact, it seemed like every meeting, we got further apart. Mike Jaglowski, at our first meeting on June first, proposed that they had a fallback position of splitting the south eight-seven-five acres, existing RL zoning, to, along a north-south line, and changing the west half to RCP and leaving the east half unchanged at residential low density. We thought that was a good idea and a reasonable fifty-fifty compromise. The residents were informed at the next meeting on June eighth that the JGV owners rejected that idea. On that meeting and the third and last meeting on August twenty-sixth, the discussions were solely about the eastern half of the existing residential low-density area, and we couldn't come to terms on, one, the unit density, two, the types of residential buildings allowed, or three, the height of the building. On one, the density, the apartment buildings at twenty-four units per acre, six times the existing density, and in no way are compatible or blend with the adjoining single-family community. RCP allows a full range of densities from single-family RCP allows a full range of densities from single-family upwards, and JG Ventures has chosen the least compatible density. Number two, the building types. The residents do not want condominiums or apartments, nor do they want zero lot-line dwelling units. During discussions with Mike Jazlowski on June 8th, fourplexes, the most that we wanted to consider, were discussed extensively. And I thought that's what was going to happen. Mike Jazlowski said he would bring that to the JGV owners. However, on August 26th, on our last meeting, we were told that was rejected and that they would not compromise on a density of 24. The building height, we've also, we've always wanted a height limit of 25 feet that matches the restrictive covenants in Sagewood Hills. Residential low zoning does allow 35 feet while RCP allows 45 feet. JG Ventures and Mike Jazlowski agreed to a 32-foot limit on residential land in their written contract rezoning proposal dated August 10th, '22. Now, JG Ventures proposes 40 feet in this document.
My name's John Davis. I live at 660 Bitterroot Drive, and I'm part of that 300-foot affected area. And I just wanted to follow up with the conclusion of what Rick was talking about. So he was talking about the building height. Residents have always wanted the height of 25 feet to match the Sagewood Hill restricted covenant limits. RL zoning does allow 35 feet while RCP allows 45 feet. JGV and Mike agreed to a 30-foot limit on the residential land in their written contract rezoning proposal dated 8/10/2022. Now, JGV proposes 40 feet in this document, page 14. 40 feet was never mentioned in any discussion or communication with the Sagewood Hills representatives. This change, in particular, along with the two points above, caused the residents to oppose the latest JGV proposal. We are most certainly not trying to deny the developers their property rights. We would offer several options of up to 12 units per acre, townhomes or fourplexes and up to 32 feet in height. And none of these proposals were accepted by the developer. Thank you.
I'm Wally Kennedy at 801 Bitterroot. And I just call in to question the, point two about the assessment of the proposal. Point two is whether uses permitted by the zoning change would blend with surrounding land uses. And I'm kind of a little numbers guy. So the three sides of the property are the east side, the west, the east side, the north side, and then the south side. And the south side and the east side are RL. The north side is, what is it, RCP, I guess. And the north side is only about 500 feet. The west side, or the, excuse me, the east side, which is Sagewood Hills, is 1,375 feet. And the south side is 440 feet. So when we're talking about the blending with the surrounding land uses, most of the surrounding land uses are RL. Sagewood Hills is RL and the south portion, which is 440 feet, is RL. So that's about over a three-to-one ratio for residential low-density being adjoining that property. So it seems to me that it does not blend with the surrounding land uses based upon that analysis. And so the preponderance of property adjoining that 8.75 acres is RL. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Write our names. We'll write.
Okay. We had a couple extra questions.
I'm Joy Kennedy. I live at 801 Bitterroot Drive. I'd like to thank you, especially in the fact this is the second meeting, and it's pretty obvious that all members of this board are taking this seriously and asking questions and taking our concerns as residents seriously. And we do appreciate that. I had a speech ready, but after listening to some of the comments, I'm not really going to follow it. Mr. Burtonshaw expressed frustration, and I'm sure he is. You buy something, you see an opportunity, do a lot of work, and then you hit these roadblocks, and you feel like this work, you've just invested so much time and energy and money and worry and whatever, and it's just like, oh, because that's where I am. I spent a long time trying to find a place to retire to and to live, and I researched it for a year and a half. And I spent thousands of dollars making trips out here researching this. And my frustration, I didn't own it two years, and boom. Now, we knew that property was for sale. All of us did. I knew it. I checked the zoning before I signed that contract because I didn't want to be pushed down again by developers. I've had it happen 24 times now. It's like this curse. And for a while, I thought, did I bring this curse to Pocatello with me? I'm so sorry if I did, but I don't think I did. The world is changing. The frustrations are real. They're real on both sides. But developers and businesses know when they start developing against neighborhoods, they are going to have roadblocks, they're going to have to make concessions. And I think the point is, they're talking about putting big apartment buildings right next to us. That's people and motorcycles and cars and boats and RVs and traffic right in our face. That was not what we signed up for. That's not what was in the plan. It's not what it was zoned for. There are more creative ways that they could get apartments into that land they bought than just stacking them up there on the hill. They could break them up into little half-circles with courtyards on the ends. They could bake smaller apartment units here and there and dot them through and really integrate it and blend it. Some communities have had great success with putting like these apartments above certain kinds of businesses and these business complexes. They're really successful.
Hi. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Therese Balkenbush. I live at 719 Bitterroot Drive in Pocatello. The JG Ventures contract rezone contains a residential use portion of the parcel adjacent to the Sagewood Hills subdivision with a development potential of 24 units per acre. This density falls within the residential high-density zoning district and thus creates a residential high-density zone bordering its low-density neighbors. I oppose the residential development of this intensity on the shared boundary and request that the housing density be limited to no higher than the residential medium-density multifamily zoning or 12 units per acre. I reviewed the current Pocatello zoning map. I found only three instances of a shared property boundary between residential high-density and residential low-density districts. In none of these examples was high-density-zoned apartments neighboring low-density-zoned single-family homes as proposed by JG Ventures. Similarly, I found eight instances of boundaries shared between RCP-zoned land and residential low-density zoning. Two of these instances were undeveloped, but of the remaining six, there were no instances of RCP-zoned apartments next to residential low-density single-family homes. The residential portion of the contract rezone proposed by JG Ventures creates an interface between residential high-density and residential low-density single-family homes not found within the city of Pocatello. I'm requesting that this residential portion be limited to at least, to no higher than residential medium-density multifamily zoning. As you can see, the neighbors are not asking for something unreasonable. We're not asking for special treatment or an exception. We're just asking for consistency within the city and where high-density housing is allowed. Please think carefully about your loyal and longstanding citizens, the potential impact this proposed contract rezone could have on our home values, our quality of life, and please consider this request to limit the density of housing in our backyards. Thank you.
I apologize in advance. I'm going to run through my comments to make it inside the three minutes. My name is Cliff Olson. I live at 735 Bitterroot Drive. The area residents respectfully request that the Commission and, following that, the City Council both deny this request as there are many things allowed under RCP that would fundamentally be unacceptable to us. The statement was made that they're up against 10 homeowners. We have 94 people who have signed our opposition position, and it's in your record there. Now, let me make a legal point, which I believe is a legal point. Existing zoning is law. Guidance, as mentioned in the comprehensive plan, should not trump law. Such that zoning request changes do not automatically necessitate approval by the city. As quoted in the 2015 Comprehensive Plan update, this is a direct quote, "This plan is a conceptual planning document, not a specific development plan or code. As such, it will be used as a guide to develop future ordinances and codes, but cannot be used as an ordinance or code itself. Therefore, the failure to accomplish any goals or objective or policy of this plan does not give rise to legal rights against the city," unquote. That's a key point. Area residents have commented on the JGV resubmital application. It was originally in an 84-page PDF. Our comments are on pages 40 through 70 of the 84-page document. It's now been replaced by a 109-page PDF document, which added a lot of more comments from the neighbors. So I hope that you were able to work your way through this voluminous file and see and read those comments. They're in red. My comments here today relate to the approximate nine acres to the south of the subject land owned by RGV. Our position is the residents should never have to fight or defend against zoning changes, but the entity asking for the zoning change should be forced to justify their change request. The area of residents offered to let the west half of the land be changed to RCP zoning and felt that this was a significant compromise that we made where we, right there, went halfway with JGV. And then we talked about the east half, which is up against the land, the homeowners on Bitterroot. And one thing that they're being disingenuous about is they're talking about a density reduction from 30%.
I'm sorry.
I'm Kathy Olson, and I'm going to sign in, and then you can start the time. I'm going to finish Cliff's comments as three minutes was not quite enough. Discussions with Jazlowski on the east half of the currently RL zone did not result in much progress. The basic areas of contention are residential density, types of residential buildings allowed, and building height limits. For example, we keep going back to the 40-foot height that they want to have. It's so much higher than anything else. RJ, or RGV wants to change the residential density to 24 when currently the density would be four dwelling units per acre and increased by a factor of six. This seems disingenuous. The characters, they, I'm sorry, this characterizes, characteristic, this has a decrease of 20% from 30 to 24. It's actually a 600% increase from 4 to RL. Mixed use allows RCP, but also the three other residential codes between RC and RCP. JG Ventures could build on the street 30 houses on this level without any zoning change. So I understand it's really a difficult thing to listen to all of us, try to protect, but what you decide today is also going to be used for other people. And so if we're not careful how we adjust zoning up against residential areas, it'll go for the whole city, and we have a wonderful city. So thank you very much for listening to us tonight. I believe I'm the last person. Anybody else want to say anything?
We tried really hard to be organized and to be more efficient this time. We appreciate your comments last time to us, and hopefully we managed to achieve everything that you've asked us.
Your execution was impressive. We appreciate it. At this time, is there anybody else opposed to the application that would like to come No? So at this time, the applicant can rebuttal?
So is there a way that we can recess? I was hoping it would be closer to 8:30 where you announced it.
Well, it's eight, but I would prefer to just keep going.
Okay. Mike Jazlowski, Kimport Engineering. One thing I will say is they are very organized. And I think I preempted this a little bit, is that our discussions, I heard it called discussions, I heard it called meetings, I heard it called negotiations, were about to try to get, to try to bring something to harmonizing the commercial zone or RCP zone across the street to the west and the residential zone to the east. And this is the site to do that. I think I also preempted that this was not a place where we drank soda pop and giggled. You know, it was difficult. There were hard discussions. There was a lot of statements that were made about the things that I said. Several of them were true. So at this time, the applicant can rebuttal?
So is there a way that we can recess? I was hoping it would be closer to 8:30 where you announced it.
Well, it's eight, but I would prefer to just keep going.
Okay. Okay. Mike Jaglowski, Kimport Engineering. One thing I will say is they are very organized. And I think I preempted this a little bit, is that our discussions, I heard it called discussions, I heard it called meetings, I heard it called negotiations, were about to try to get, to try to bring something to harmonizing the commercial zone or RCP zone across the street to the west and the residential zone to the east. And this is the site to do that. I think I also preempted that this was not a place where we drank soda pop and giggled. You know, it was difficult. There were hard discussions. There was a lot of statements that were made about the things that I said. Several of them were true. Negotiations and trying to come to some kind of medium, you have to start somewhere. Knowing that RCP is a transitional zone, knowing that mixed use from the comprehensive plan allows to have RCP as a zoning district in that area makes sense for this. Now, I too understand. I was thinking about trying to categorize all these different comments in here, but I do understand when someone says, "Look, it's frustrating because I've lived here for 30 years, and now I'm not going to have the blank yard behind me. Now I don't have this opportunity." I think there was a comment that said that this was for sale on there, and it was advertised. And if it was that important, perhaps they should have bought it. And it could be their playground. It could be their park. It could have been their other place that they could have hung out. And I get that. It's rough. But the fact of the matter is, is that this is a transitional zone. This is a zone that, as Ryan commented on, is on the medical mile. Thank you, Ryan. May I use that? Awesome. Okay? Medical mile. This is a place that deserves to have this office professional. This is a place that has, deserves to have a residential component to it. So the people that work in those buildings and the people that work in the hospitals and the people that work in the restaurants and the people that work in the banks and the people that work in everything else around there will have a chance to live and not have to drive their 500 cars 20 miles or 10 miles to get to someplace. This is a mixed-use complex. This is a, another comment that I heard is that we're looking at buildings that have 18 units to it and 24 units to it. And I think at one point during our discussions, I think a number like 32 units came out on there. And yes, I was depicting the maximum. I was doing that for a reason. I was doing that to give this board, this commission, I should say, pardon me, this commission, an opportunity to see what the one extreme was. And what we heard was what the other extreme is. And what we're looking to do is we're looking to have a transition. Now, 24 units per acre, that's a lot of houses, but it also, or that's a lot of residents, but it fits. It fits for the use, it fits for the need of Pocatello, and it fits for everything that we have that's required in this area. I'm trying to gather my thoughts. I apologize. There's a lot of comments. I'm impressed with some of the comments that came out of the staff report. I believe that you have that staff report. I've had a chance to review it on there. Words like purpose and intent of the ordinance, words like compliant, words like, you know, offer is opportunity, you know, offering words that give us further direction on developing instead of, "You can't do that because it doesn't work with the ordinance," wasn't in that staff report. That staff report indicated loud and clear that this proposal works. This proposal works for the land that it sits at. This proposal works based on the comprehensive plan and works for the zoning district that we're seeking. The contract rezone agreement portion of this is a benefit, is something that helps the residents to try to come up with something, I shouldn't say helps residents, but allows the communication between the two parties to be able to, the two parties to be able to come to something that harmonizes. Another portion of this, I heard comments about this site may not be suitable, and it was expressing things in 1705. 1705, all those things have to be looked at. All those things have to be considered. They're not required at a rezone application on that. As a development works through its process, first, of course, you do your due diligence, you buy property, and then you, if you need to rezone it, you rezone it on that. Then you start looking at the site issues. JG Ventures went a couple steps ahead, and they said, "Let's go ahead and get a geotechnical study that's done." That's a study that says this is suitable for high-rise buildings. This is suitable, I shouldn't say high-rise, these are suitable for buildings that would fit within RCP. These are suitable for buildings that are suitable for high-density residential. These are suitable for driveways and streets, fourplexes, and everything that happens within the residential area. Additionally, we went a step further, and we took a look at the slope analysis. We ran through a lot of different figures on that, and we looked at historical pictures that depicted what it looked like 50 years ago and tried to determine what kind of places were predisturbed and what type of places are undisturbed on that. And then we were counseled, "Okay, this is a good idea. Now let's start working on the rezone." And that almost pertinently came right from staff. With that slope analysis, we needed to have a survey go out there and do a 10-by-10, a 10-yard-by-10-yard grid out on site, just so that we had an understanding of how that was going to work. So when it comes to the site, I'm quite confident that we can develop on that site. But all those things are required. It's not required at this phase. All those things are required in the next several phases. What we are asking for is RCP residential, and we have been asked to put residential in a certain area. We've been asked to reduce the density, and we have asked to limit the height. We, at the initial venture of this, we offered to have a larger buffer on that. It also has commercial, and it has the professional component. We agree. We think on the west side makes the most sense. That is the place where we're going to opportunist the transition between the two different locations. I heard at the beginning of this meeting that several people went out on site and took a look at it, and I applaud you for that. What that demonstrates to me is that you do care, and I know that you care. I can't imagine you sitting here and listening to this for two and a half hours and not, you know, giving two shakes of Lamb's tail about it on there. But what that also demonstrates is that you know as well as we do is that that land is sloped, is that as you move down, as you move horizontally, yeah, horizontally 10 feet, you drop down, you know, maybe a half a foot, three-quarters of a foot on that. And what that does is for every piece, you're, the elevation, no matter what the elevation is, you're still going to be able to help people keep their site vision.
Can we ask Legal that? He's the applicant.
Can we stop that?
Yeah, let's go ahead and stop that. I'm sorry to interrupt. This gentleman here, I guess, is technically the applicant, but he also spoke during public comment.
I would say in this circumstance, not, just because Mike Jaglowski is the representative regarding this application, and the representative is given the chance for rebuttal.
Yeah, can I yield my time? Chair, may I yield my time to the developer?
For your last minute and 10 seconds? Yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay, very good. This is Hospital Way, but there's been a lot of talk about this being in their neighborhood. Hospital Way is not in their neighborhood. It is literally across the street from the hospital. Every major, virtually every hospital in the country has apartments across from it where the residents live, where the nurses live, where the doctors live, and it affords walkability to the hospital. This is, we came into this not with a plan, with our own plan. We came into this following the city's guidance. This was the city's plan. The city wanted this transitional zone. It's the city that put this in their comprehensive plan. When we talked to the city, every comment we had was, "Yes, that's exactly what we want. We want from single-family to multifamily to professional business to, you know, the Hospital Way." And so they call, they've called me disingenuous multiple times. I would say it's disingenuous to pretend that Hospital Way is in the middle of the neighborhood. North of it is, is RCP. West of it is RCP. This is an RCP zone. That's not in a neighborhood.
Discussion?
I have questions.
Please.
I have questions. I don't care if you want it to be the developer or your representative, but I have questions.
It should probably be the representative.
All right, my first question. We heard a comment about the parking that's here. I'm trying to count how many parking spaces are drawn on this pink and green thing between the units there, because they're not all, so on those back units, the narrow little parking that's there, I thought I counted like 14 back there. Is that correct?
Well, let me, if you're looking at that site, if you're looking at that plan right there, that is a depiction.
Okay.
That is meant to show where the residential goes.
Okay.
And where the, and then where the RCP.
Not binding, but this is where you envision parking kind of going there.
Right. I mean, it could be half-moons, which is what something was mentioned earlier. I mean, we don't know. What we do know is that residential works on this site and.
Yeah, I got that part.
Through everything else. Okay.
Okay. You have this little image here of dark sky lighting, dark sky outdoors, and one of the concerns was about lighting for parking lots. Can you explain what this is? You didn't really talk about it.
Well, dark sky awareness and lighting is in your city ordinance, city code, and it's something that everyone has to follow. That right there is a depiction, and truthfully, if that was able to come up on, and I had more time and I saw that, that was going to be an item that I was going to use to talk about.
Well, I'm asking about it now. What does dark sky?
What dark sky means is that the light is a certain height, the outside parking lights, any kind of lights that are outside are faced completely downward, and that goes with lights that are on the side of buildings and lights that are out in parking lots. They also have a height regulation of how high the lights are. I'm not exactly sure what it is, but my recollection is that it's like 15 feet is the height of an outside light, and it's firmly.
Directional, it's got things that direct the light down, not out.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So that's what your dark sky ordinance is.
Okay. Thank you. So I need to know, what was the problem with the fourplexes with 12 units? What was the problem? Why was that? Why did the property owners say, "Nope, that's not going to cut it"?
Well, again, this was, this was trying to seek a middle ground. And one way of being able to seek middle grounds is offering both things at either end on that. Nothing that I can say in those meetings are binding, and everything that I learned from those meetings, I took back to the developers, and we talked about it.
I understand. What was their concern with fourplexes? I need to understand their thinking and why it was a concern.
Right. It's a, their concern was, is that that was, that was mentioned, that was mentioned in one of our meetings. I specifically said this could be anything from duplexes, fourplexes, multifamily, larger, and then that's where a lot of the conversation started, while you're showing that it's 36 units or whatever that was said there. So it was. It was mentioned, and it was discussed, but it wasn't, it wasn't something that fit with our plan on that.
So it's just because that's not what they want? Okay, I can't, if you're going to be up here, you need to be up here. Okay? You can't talk from the sideline because it's not even part of the record.
What Mr. Burton Shaw is talking about is economics. And what that, what economics is all about is that if there is a, if there is a use that can be used on a piece of ground, and if it makes sense from a dollar and cents point of view, then that is a use that could be moved forward. A fourplex doesn't work for the amount of, for the amount of ground that a fourplex footprint takes and the opportunity to sell or to rent.
Okay. Back away from the fourplex. 12, the 12, the 12 units per acre?
Acre.
Acre? Okay, that was offered as a compromise. Okay? It's half of the 24, but it's significantly more than what's under residential low-density. Again, I'm curious, why is that not acceptable?
Again, it's economics.
It's just they wouldn't make enough money to pay for.
It's just pure economics. Is what it comes down to. 24 units, from a maximum standpoint, works.
Okay. Thank you. No, not from him.
You mentioned that you were asked to put the residential units on the east side of this property?
Yes.
Who asked you?
Well, we initially had that planned from our site plan review meeting. We depicted that as a map at our site plan review meeting, and staff at that time said that this is a good place to locate this. And that's where we, that's where we first started putting the residents on the east side. I get the point that if this is flat-out rezoned as RCP residential, commercial, professional could go anywhere on that property. And it makes sense, from a transitional point of view, to put the residentials on the east side. With the contract rezoning, it's causing us to commit to putting them on the east side.
So you mentioned that you were asked, though. Were you asked by the residents or by the city?
No, I was, we, we, we had a discussion of where to put the residential as a development group. It was an internal meeting. It was, you know, a discussion that we have.
Legal, can you please come tell us?
So when we were doing the opportunity to rehear the public hearing comment, the initial presentation by Mr. Jaglowski, and then the rebuttal, I was more concerned with time limits. But if, with the commission wanting to find answers, ultimately, in my opinion, would be up to the chair on who those answers from the applicant or their representative would be better coming from, and ultimately, that's up to the chair on who would be best to answer those questions. I'm not as concerned with time limits right now, if that makes sense.
Sure. So we can direct the question to whoever we like, but it's very important that they are the only person that answers that question.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So what was your question?
My question was, why, why 12 per acre is just won't work?
There's two questions that Mike was struggling a little bit. Well, one is a matter, to your question, it's a matter of economics. When you buy ground by the dollar per foot as opposed to by the acre, you have to maximize that, right? When you're looking at, you know, ground out in the country, you might pay $10,000 an acre for farm ground. When you're buying commercial ground, you might be paying $6 to $20 per foot, which equates to, you know, $300,000, $400,000 an acre. And so with that, you have to create density in order to make the economics work. In response to your question, we asked, well, who came up with this plan of the housing or the apartments up against, sorry, up against the residential? That is the transition, right? That is what the city asked for, a transition from housing to commercial. And so it wouldn't make sense, although we could do that, I'm not opposed to it, from housing.
Can I just say, if we are going to act like this, we'll just shut it down. We'll table it, and we'll have to come back. I understand this is frustrating. I understand. I live in a single-family residential area, and I have apartments in my backyard because of a rezone. I understand your passion, but we have to keep this civil, and we have to keep things moving. And in my opinion, the applicant and the applicant representative are the same person doing the same thing. I'm going to give him his time.
Thank you. That is what the city has asked for. That is a transition from single-family to multifamily to commercial. That's why white was placed there.
The city asked for single-family, multifamily, in that order?
I hesitate to say absolutely yes, but in all our discussions, when you talk about a transition, that is the transition. Somebody from the city would like to clarify that. A staff member, but yes, that was the discussion, that's what the city would like to see, the transition from single-family to multifamily to commercial.
Okay, thank you. I think both those questions have been answered.
So I have another question for you.
Sure.
Changing zoning is important, and your example of the thing over McKinley is not, is a much different situation than what this is. That was not a zoning change. Okay? What I need to know here, and my concern, I don't really care how much money you make off of this. I hope you're profitable. I hope you do well on it. Okay? My concern is if it's only money that this is about, then is there any, I'm here to represent the neighbors and to represent best interests of the city. Okay? If it's just, I don't care how much money you make off of it, that's your problem.
Sure.
Okay? So if I'm going to rezone this, I need, especially the contract rezone, I need need to know what is the big problem with the 12 that they're going for and 24 that you wanted, other than money?
I appreciate you saying that, because you do represent the community, okay? And when the city planning gets together and they put together a comprehensive plan, they do that to the benefit of the community as a whole. They don't do it to the benefit of a few neighbors next to it, they do it to the community at large, and for the community at large, you have, you have a hospital across the street, the only hospital in Pocatello, and this hospital requires nurses, it requires residents who come and go, it requires temporary housing for these people, it requires walkability, which is the very reason why when the city gets together, and I wasn't in this meeting, but I can imagine how this conversation goes, that here we have hospital way, here we have a major hospital, we're the only hospital in Pocatello, and we have no walkability, we have no transitional zone, we have no apartments, and so the city got together at some point, and they said, you know what, an industrial zone does not work for this. An industrial zone that was there when most of these neighbors bought their houses or built their houses, which is far more permissible than, than an RCP zone, okay? Industrials is dirty as you can get, right? And the city said, we don't want industrial, we don't want that kind of stuff, we want a transition so we can maximize and, and utilize our hospital with things that surround that, along hospital way.
Did he answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
That is, that is where those conversations come from, I wasn't there, but certainly somebody could answer that.
That's good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Not for him.
One question, four concessions were mentioned earlier in the presentation, I only got three of them, a double buffer zone, building height reduction, reduce the residential by 20%, could you just give me that fourth one?
I'm not sure.
Oh, placing, placing resi-
Go ahead, yeah.
Placing residential on the eastern boundary.
Residential.
Okay, thank you.
The placement of residential was considered a concession as opposed to anywhere along the property.
Got it.
Thank you.
As opposed to putting a commercial on the east.
You can go ahead and have a seat.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No, I have a discussion.
I have, I have questions for staff. Okay, Matt? I have questions for staff, please. Oh, really? Okay.
If I can't answer it, I'll have Matt do it.
Okay.
I'm Brett McLean, Planning Director.
Okay. Question number one, the height of the homes that is in the Sagewood area for residential low density, what does the city allow?
The city allows outright 35 feet.
Okay.
With the option that they can get a 10% increase of, which would make that about, I think, 38 and a half feet, which is what staff.
So they're lower?
They are lower.
That's not the restriction they put on themselves?
That's their own restriction that they put on themselves.
Yes, neighborhood covenant.
It's the neighborhood covenants, and that has nothing to do with city.
Okay, second question, what happens if they get in there and we do the slope study and it's greater than allowed? What happens to this contract rezone?
So they have to develop it according to what they can develop, so.
Okay.
You know, we'll have to do an analysis of that and determine what can be developed and what can't be developed, and they have to meet all the development standards that are in the zoning ordinance, and the contract rezone would stay in place and whatever they can develop will be allowed to be developed.
Okay, next question, is this property higher than the land on Bitterroot or lower?
Lower.
Okay, I thought so, I've been up at the property, I didn't do a site visit this time because I go by there all the time, it's on the way to work. Next question, and this might be a Merrill question, so maybe I'll skip and wait until Merrill comes up. In a lot of the comments, it talks about zero lot line dwelling units, what is that?
That's a good question. A zero lot line dwelling unit, they're kind of hard to define, and I don't really-
Condominiums.
Yeah, it's kind of like a condominium.
They're owned by separate people, and there's only a wall between them.
But it's different than a townhouse, which could have a zero lot line, so our code differentiates zero lot line dwellings and townhouses, which might share a property line, the RL zone does allow for townhouses to be developed.
So townhouses could be there, okay. Good to know, okay? The other one, I need, I want to make sure I understand this, in the highest density zoning that we have in the city, which is?
It's this one, the RCP or the RH, they're the same.
Okay, and the number of units that would be allowed per acre is the 30, right?
Thirty, correct.
Okay, and the other questions that I have are for Merrill, I believe, they're engineering kind, they're street questions, you want to answer street questions?
No, I don't.
I didn't think you would, I don't.
Any other questions for me?
Any, any other question? Okay, thank you. We didn't want to leave you out, Merrill.
Well, he's here, he needs to answer some questions.
He just liked to stay on the back wall.
Is that what it is? Okay.
Merrill Quell, Public Works Engineer for the City of Pocatello.
Okay, I have a question about hospital way, this hospital way, can it handle the additional traffic that would come out of this zone? Is it built to handle that traffic? What about the stoplight also? I'm going to want to know about the stoplight, center and hospital way.
Without a full analysis, though, I could say pretty confidently, yes.
Okay.
That road is wide, it does have some vertical curves that we're going to need to, once they start laying stuff out, to make sure that we can place driveways and stuff, but other than that, the road itself can handle the traffic.
Okay.
I know that it's an inconvenience at times, the lights and different things like that, but everything, and even the stuff we did a few months ago over on Vista, across the way, coming into center, same thing, when we did the analysis and everything, everything could flow, and this is designated as a, a principal to minor arterial.
That's what I needed to know, okay. Second question, then, as part of, before they build anything there, they're going to have to do a traffic study, right? Or something like that, you said without doing that?
It depends on when they start developing, when we look at that development, if there's more than 100 peak hour, then they have to do, they'll do a traffic.
They'll do a traffic study.
Impact study, a study. If it's less than that, then we ask for some analysis and to confirm what I'm already doing.
They won't have to necessarily do the full expensive study, but they would have to.
But if there's 100, more than 100 peak hour with this, through the books that can show that there's going to be that, then yes, we will designate that there needs to be a traffic study.
Okay, the next question I have is about what are, would there be blind driveways onto hospital way? Tell me how the city addresses that, because I know you don't like, you don't, you won't let that happen, so.
Well, that's what we're, that's why I said the vertical curves.
That's what a vertical curve is?
With the vertical curves and everything, we'll need to do some looking at that and the grading and make sure site distance is applicable for the speed and, and what is in place for the, even though it's a, it's still a residential road. It's got some, if we need to adjust the speeds and so forth, is what we look at that, but we.
To address that, so there's more time to see people.
And braking speeds and everything else.
Okay, that was the only questions that I have.
Any other questions for Merrill? No? Okay. So. It's our time to discuss.
I think Shin had a point he wanted to make, maybe?
Oh, no, I think, just, I guess for a discussion, I don't know, I think, kind of, I guess I would probably add another condition, I would actually side with the community and says, you know, add ninth clause and say, have a residential density changed to 12 dwelling units per acre in the residential use area of 3.8 acres to the east. This, I think, will be a compromise, because there, the other side, you know, the west side is still RCP, that is still, so we will still approve the RCP, and so, in terms of, I guess the height, there's, the height is basically, it's what's allowed already, so I think when Merrill kind of put, when Matt put 38.5, I think that's kind of, that's already residential, that's kind of, there's nothing the city can do right now, even with the current system, so I wouldn't change that, I know residents want lower, but that's not, you know, what the law or kind of current situation is. In terms of, kind of like, you know, I think, you know, is 12 probably going to break the developer? Probably not, you know, it's difficult to say without understanding the financial model that, in which, I was an investment banker before, so I have to see the financial model, but that's also not going to be disclosed by the developer anyway, but, I mean, it's probably better to have that and then also be approved than kind of not approved, I think.
So I was thinking something very similar, but doing that 12 on the, the stuff that's at the very back of that residential area, and allowing the higher density on the stuff across the street, which does fulfill the transition.
Across the drive.
Across the driveway, across the street of that thing, so those back four units would be the lower density of 12 units, which the, the neighbors are fine with, and have the higher density in the front, which the developer wants, and nobody seems to have any problem with the residential, commercial, professional part down at the front, everybody's fine with that, okay? But that would be a compromise between the two of them, and that's, so it's kind of what you're talking about, but a little more nuanced in there. I don't know, I don't know if anybody else likes that idea, I don't know. Thoughts on that?
I, I think that, I wrote down pretty much everyone's concern, and the three things that I came back to that were concerns of the residents were density, height, and then it doesn't blend well with their current community. I think height can mostly be eliminated because in the current zoning RL, they're going to be able to build up to 38.5, which is a very small difference from 40, which is what the community, or the city recommends. Density, I, I think it needs to be discussed by the commission, it sounds like that's an extreme issue for the residents, I also understand that that's an economic difference for the developer, and I respect that as a business, you're there to make money, and then blending, it sounds like the residents have some thoughts on that, but maybe the commission does as well. I don't, I don't have a lot of answers for it, but I think that's what I, what I heard overall.
Well, I did appreciate the developers, when pushed, it wasn't just the money, we do need to have affordable housing, and it should, walkability is a big deal to me. I think people should be able to have places to live that are affordable, that they could walk to, and that, to me, is part of, I know why the city wanted this, also, you're looking at the ability to have people who are undergoing care or have care at the hospital someplace close by that, that they can stay, right? Which I'm sure some of these units will turn into that, because they, they always do around hospitals, into Airbnb kind of situations, so I appreciate that, I just think, I think this compromise of having the lower density at the back and the higher density across the way is a halfway point between what the residents want and what the developer wants. And I, I actually agree on the height thing, you know, just because your restrictions, your zoning restrictions in your area are much shorter, the cities aren't, okay? You put those restrictions on yourself, that's not anything the city's going to deal with. I like the setback, the increased setback, I appreciate that, I like that they've agreed to put the residential area at the back, I just am concerned, I'm, I'm understanding the concern about the higher density. I don't think there's going to be a problem with the traffic out front, the road is built to handle it, but the traffic study will tell you that as well, as will the slope. The slope thing, if they can't build there because it violates the slope ordinance, then they're not going to be able to build there, okay? That's a developer problem, this doesn't waive that in any way, shape, or form.
I think that of all the things that were listed, are all things that will, most of the things that were listed are all things that are going to be taken care of in the code when they're in the actual laying it out phase. They won't, just because there's a contract rezone in place, doesn't mean they don't have to meet all those other codes. I like your idea of maybe transitioning a little bit smoother, but I'm also trying to visualize what that would look like.
It'd have neutral, neutral paint.
I was just trying to think of something similar, but I think, I mean, that seems like a happy medium to me. What, what are your thoughts on that, Rich?
My thoughts are the same as they were in April when we looked at this the first time, this property will be accessed off of hospital way, the entire length of hospital way essentially has been developed as RCP. Much has been said about the idea of high-density housing going in here, just a little further to the south, right there at the intersection of hospital way and Bertie Thompson, is a high-density housing development, and so to say that it doesn't match or blend, I think, is not entirely accurate.
And with single-family right there.
Exactly, all of, besides that, Goldfield and Bertie Thompson are all, I, I, to be honest, I don't know what the zoning is, but they're single-family homes. And, and that's how I felt about it in April, and not everyone else felt that way, but, and I get it, I don't, I don't want to, well, that's not important, my feelings is, is that this is part of the hospital way neighborhood, not the Bitterroot way neighborhood, what I would love to see, I would love to see Pocatello, I've been, I've been here my whole entire life, I would love to see it develop its medical facilities, we've got a good start on a hospital, we have a great thing with PMC, many, many other companies, my wife works at one, has made sizable investments in this area, it would be wonderful to see it developed, and be something that, that we could brag about Pocatello, about our medical facilities, and I think this opens it up to do that. I personally, and I know that the majority of those here won't agree with me, if I were coming to Pocatello and was driving through and went down the medical mile, this has been termed, I'll probably steal that as well, I would probably find it more odd to see a housing development there in the midst of all of the RCP, sorry, excuse me, let me rephrase that, I would be more surprised to see a low-density housing development there in the midst of all of the RCP, but because this property will be accessed off of hospital way, I consider it to be part of the hospital way neighbor, neighbor, it's not a neighborhood, but more so than the Bitterroot neighborhood. And I say that with all due respect to everyone who has come and presented tonight, I understand, I get it, and it's just how I feel.
I think also we need to consider what's best, not only for these residents, which have articulated beautifully why they want it to remain a low-density area, but what's best for our community, what's going to be best for our housing crisis, what's going to be best for that space, right? We know that we have residents in the hospital, we have patients that may need housing there. I want to look at it holistically, also considering all the things that these people have said, but for our community as a whole, what does this mean?
I kind of go along with that, too. We know the people butting up against this property is going to take a little beating, there's no question about it, but you've got, the way the land is, or the property is sloped, you're just going to, you pretty much have the view to the east rather than to the west currently, am I not? Right, I mean, there's what, a 15-foot rise from the back of the houses on Bitterroot to go over towards the west, am I correct? Somebody said that.
To the east, to the east.
15?
To the east. Uphill is.
Well, when I'm looking, I'm looking at it from the homeowner's side.
Okay, but, so if you're standing in their backyard up here, is that what you're talking about?
Right, yes.
Looking west, okay.
Looking west, you've got the hill in your way.
No, it goes downhill from there.
It goes downhill.
The slopes down from there towards the hospital. The slopes down to the hospital from there.
Okay, where does the 15 feet come from? The other direction? The other direction?
The difference in height.
I mean, someone was adding 15 feet to the 40 feet, that, that rise is 55 feet, that big rise.
So, here's a diagram. So this is where the existing houses are, up on the hill.
Right.
And this is the existing ground, so it slopes down towards the hospital.
From the.
This is Hospital Road right here.
Okay.
This is Bitterroot up here.
Here's the houses right here. This, there's a crest here, isn't there not?
No.
No.
That from the backyard.
Goes straight down.
Straight down.
No.
So you're not losing.
There's this.
I mean, it's going to be blocked a lot, but I was thinking you're looking like up against the, the hill to begin with, and then you put four plexes on top of that.
It's lower.
Okay. I stand to be corrected.
I also, um, I mean, we don't need to be lectured on the comprehensive plan. We know what the comprehensive plan and what it's, what its purpose is. Um, the comprehensive plan, we're supposed to, when we make changes, we're, they, they have to align with the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan calls for a, a transition zone, a mixed-use zone. Overall, I find this meets it. I'm just looking for a little more transition on the first part there, because that's what the vision of the comprehensive plan was. I just want this a little more nuanced.
But I think more accurately, we're not only looking at the residential use area. This, we're, we're using, we're looking at the entire application, which already the compromise is that, A, the residential, commercial, professional is 4.9 acres to the bottom, right? So it's, it's, we're looking at a total of eight-point, what is it? Yeah, we're looking at a total of 8.75 acres that wants to be rezoned from residential low density to RCP. And that, in that discussion, I mean, this is kind of, when we're looking at this, it almost sounds like this is already set, but it's not. The, the, the whole application is actually to change the entire thing from residential low.
I understand that.
So I guess the, you know, in terms of, I understand that, yeah, yes, there can be a transition, but I'm kind of comfortable more with kind of leaving the residential use because of the 3.8 acres, uh, as, you know, looking at the.
You're uncomfortable with that, being residential? You don't want that to be part of?
It's comfortable.
He's more comfortable with that being residential, or did you say uncomfortable?
No, I'm just comfortable, you, you were asking, I think your argument was that the residential use, 3.8 acres, you split that into two, so you want to probably roughly calculate like two acres of the far edge of the property to only go into low density, right?
No, no. I'm not asking it to change the zoning.
Sorry, the density of 12.
The contract rezone, the applicant has already agreed to limit the density, so that it's not the high density, uh, that would be allowed under the RCP. He's already agreed to limit that. I'm looking to limit that more on that first line.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So that it's down to 12, and then bump it up to the 24 on this, across there. He's already agreed to limit that. RCP doesn't limit that.
This line could.
He's, this is part of his contract rezone. He said, yeah, we're going to limit that. I'm looking to do a compromise to limit that more on the back and still give the developer higher density on the front of it, which has nothing to do with whether it's RCP or not. I'm not asking it to be changed to high density or low density or anything like that. This is all still part of the same application. It would just be part of the contract.
I understand that. I, I'm, basically, I think you and I are talking about the same thing. I think, well, in terms of kind of the dwelling 12, the density, the residential density changing from 24 to even kind of further and accommodating to 12 units per acre, we were talking about this kind of 3.8 acre area, and I think that's you and I are agreeing. You basically wanted to say that instead of 3.8, it's you pretty much want two acres at the end, that.
So I think she's saying that these last four.
Sure.
Places right against the line would be the 12 acres, and then the next four would be.
24.
The 24 acres. But I don't even know if we can say that because, um, I mean, this is, this is preliminary. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
There, the layout might be completely different.
It might be different. So what my, okay, so I'm going to make a motion. I mean, is there anybody else?
But no, actually.
We'd have to close the public hearing first.
I just want to, I want to.
We'd have to close the public hearing before I make the motion?
No, we don't. But I just want to, um, ask, make sure I'm understanding this correctly. Lighting standard in, um, mixed-use zoning shall not exceed 15 feet. So that's in this, it can't exceed 15 feet. So I don't need to make that a condition. Perfect, okay.
It's in the code.
Okay, okay, now you can make your motion.
So, I would move to recommend approval of the Contract Zone MAP Amendment Application from JG Ventures LLC, from residential low density to residential commercial professional, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 17.02.170 of the Pocatello City Code, with the conditions listed in the staff report, and with the additional condition that the 12 units per acre limit would apply to adjoining property to the RL property to the east, and then the higher density of 24 would apply to that that is not adjoining property across the street, and to authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact.
You know, I'm, I'm pretty fast at typing, but you're going to have so many.
I will, and I can, I can, I have it written out for you. I can share with you.
You splitting the.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Splitting the, uh.
Yeah. So that the property that is adjoining, the stuff that's adjoining Sagewood Hill property owners have a lower density, and the stuff that is not adjoining has a higher density.
So the developer would lose 12 units, but the residents would gain.
The lower density that they said they wanted.
Backing to their direct property.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Hewlett, a second by Frye. Aislinn, will you call vote?
Hewlett?
Yes.
Frye?
That's you.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Barto?
Yes.
No.
No.
Fenwick?
No.
Phillips?
No.
Rue?
No.
No.
No, it is.
Would somebody like to make another motion?
You don't like mine.
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a move to recommend approval of the Contract Zone MAP Amendment Application from JG Ventures LLC, from residential low density to residential commercial professional, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 17.02.170 of Pocatello City Code, with the condition listed in the staff report, with the addition of condition number nine, which to ensure that residential density be changed to 12 dwellings per unit, acre, in the residential use area of 3.8 acres to the east of the proposed rezone area.
I'll second that.
We, we'll make sure you get the verbiage. We have a motion by Rue and a second by Hewlett. Aislinn, will you call vote?
I second.
Hewlett.
Okay. Rue?
Yes.
Hewlett?
Yes.
Barto?
Yep.
Chanda?
No.
Fenwick?
No.
Frye?
No.
Phillips?
No.
Motion fails.
I mean, I think at this point, it appears that maybe most of us like it the way it's presented with the conditions that the staff has put on it.
Yeah.
Someone want to make that motion?
I think both parties could still put this together because it is a good deal overall. We just got to get together. I've kind of wobbled on the, on the know myself, but I feel for you people. I've, I've been through that myself, having a, just a subdivision 10 blocks away, my traffic, I had the traffic problem. So there's things, there's problems going to be there. We're not going to, we're not going to eliminate them, but we got to work together. And I think for the community, it's probably a, it's a plus.
I'll make a motion.